If I could have your attention, please, if you are willing and able, would you be kind enough to stand for the invocation? I will present to you the Reverend Paul Leslie for the McDonough Christian Church and also he's one of the chaplains of the Henry County Police Department. And if you would, remain standing for the pledge to the flag, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the unique privilege tonight of opening this public meeting with prayer. Your word says that if we are committed to your word, if we meditate upon your word, God, that we'll be blessed if we don't run in the way of the wickedness and the trouble of this world. So, Father, I pray for wisdom over the decisions that are made tonight. Father, I pray for our country in this month of election coming up and, God, just that we would understand the importance of absolute authority, understand the privilege that we have in this country to be able to vote. And so, Father, tonight, we humbly come before you and we ask a blessing over this county. Father, your word says like a tree planted by water that you'll meet all of our needs. But, Father, we've got to seek you wholeheartedly tonight. Father, we pray for the men and women in uniform who represent freedom around the world, who are willing to stand in harm's way. And tonight especially for the public servants of this county, for those who handle the 911 calls, for our firefighters, for our deputies and our police officers, God, we are blessed in mighty ways. So, Father, tonight, bless the chairman, bless these commissioners and all that they hear. Give them wisdom and discernment in their decisions and we humbly say, "Thank you, Father, in the name of your son, Jesus, we pray." Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, October the 18th, 2016, meet and come to order. What I would like to do is ask the board to consider some amendments. Amendment one was to remove item Public Carrying, RZ-16-23, which is item nine C. For the record, this Public Carrying, RZ-16-23, states addition of McDonough, Georgia, requesting rezoning from C2 General Commercial to M1 Light Manufacturing for the property located at 1068 Daly Mill Road in Land Lot 16 of the 7th District, a property consent of 2.00 plus or minus acres, and request is for a regular service with storage. I understand this is a request to remove it by the applicant. The second amendment is I would like for the board to consider moving item 17, County Attorney, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of Aneesement to authorize funding for a technical college building from splash for resolution. I would like to move that or suggest moving it and put it right behind number 11, Roman Newman 11. Put it after, says request addressed to Board of Commissioners by Bill Tony, put it right after that. Does any other commissioner have any suggested amendments? Seeing none, does somebody move we amend the agenda that I just presented?
So moved.
Have motion District 3, second District 1. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. We've got a proclamation for the 2016 Retired Educators' Day.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight we have a proclamation in recognition of Retired Educators' Day. Whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 6th, 2016, as Retired Educators' Day in Georgia, and whereas there are over 118,000 retired educators in Georgia, with more than 26,000 of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of the respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of society. And whereas citizens of Henry County and the State of Georgia are grateful for the work done by retired educators around the state and nation, and we commend them for their time and commitment to our country and our county. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the day of November 6th, 2016, be recognized as Retired Educators' Day in Henry County, during which time we encourage all citizens to honor those who have dedicated their lives to the education of our youth and recognize the contributions those retired educators continue to make in our community. This 18th day of October, 2016, signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
Do we have somebody here for a photo? Proclamation for Fire Prevention Month.
Good evening again, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight we have a proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Month in Henry County. Whereas the Henry County Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires resulted in more than 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to more than 369,500 home fires. And whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas the Henry County Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years", effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years and determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacturing on the back of the alarms. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of October, 2016, shall be known as Fire Prevention Month and the week of October 9th through 15th was known as Fire Prevention Week throughout the county, during which time all citizens are urged to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Month and supporting the many public safety efforts of the Henry County's Fire Department. This 18th day of October, 2016, signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
Do we have any people here for a picture? Proclamation PETA recognition for the fire department.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to read a prepared statement from PETA, an international organization dedicated to protecting the rights of all animals. On behalf of people for the ethical treatment of animals and our more than 5 million members and supporters worldwide, many of whom live in Georgia, I'm pleased to present Henry County Fire Department with a compassionate Fire Department Award for rescuing a dog named Bama from a 40-foot-deep well and returning him to his family. Members of our community, both two-legged and four-legged, are lucky to have such a compassionate and dedicated fire department. We hope your team's effort will inspire others to come to the aid of animals in need. Yours truly, Ingrid Newkirk, President, PETA. Thank you.
Do you have somebody here for a picture? Recognition of Citizens for our roadway cleanup initiative in District 1. We have one that we didn't do at the last meeting because they was unable to attend.
Good evening again, Chairman and Commissioners. This evening we have a certificate of appreciation for Joe Chapman. In recognition of his service to the citizens of Henry County, by keeping the community's roads clean and free of litter, the Henry County Board of Commissioners offers its sincerest appreciation for his time and effort in picking up trash and blowing debris from the roadways and patrolling local neighborhoods, seeking out those who need a helping hand. And I believe Mr. Chapman should be here today.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for your service and dedication to keep our communities clean and safe from litter. Thank you, sir.
Public Carrying, RZ-16-17, the Reservoir Group of Athens, Georgia, requested rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture to R2 Single Family Residential for the property located near the intersection of Airline Road and East Lake Road, east of Airline Road and Land Lot 22 of 43 of the 7th District. The property consists of 26.32 plus or minus acres and request is for a single-family residential subdivision. Dante, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone 26.23 acres plus or minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to R1 Single Family Residential for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision. And the applicant previously requested R2 zoning, but from the time of their initial application until now, they amended their request to request R1 instead of R2. The applicant's proposing 17 lots with a net density of 0.89 lots per acre and a minimum lot size of one acre, as shown on the overhead. The future land use map designates the subject property as rural residential up to one dwelling unit per acre. And with regards to the one unit per acre, they meet that policy guide with respect to the dwelling units per acre. So, on September 8th, 2016, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval of the applicant's amended request to rezone the subject property from RA to R1 with 10 conditions. And tonight, I present the zoning advisory board's recommendation to the Board of Commissioners of approval with 12 conditions and I'll place those on the overhead for your viewing. Be happy to answer any questions you have this time.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Not just time, Chair.
Say again?
Not just time.
Okay, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to invite the applicant to come forward and state your case, please.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members. My name is Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, representing the Reservoir Group. In the request before you this evening, we've got just a different view of the site, nothing different in the layout, just a colored rendering. As Dante mentioned, we do have approximately 22 acres, our original request, which was for R2, and I believe 28 lots. And after much consideration and discussions with surrounding property owners and staff, are happy to present this revised request of R1 and 17 lots. We, just a couple of just brief highlights, 2,900 square foot minimum heated space is what the applicant has proposed, craftsman-style homes. The, there'll be a mandatory homeowner association that would maintain entrance landscaping in any buffer areas, as well as the ponds. And they, one thing I just wanted to just highlight to you this evening is that the developer and the builder are one and the same on this project. I presented a project a few, I guess a month ago, and it was a similar situation. And that is a key feature, I think, that is worth discussing, and that is the fact that these aren't going to be what people are seeing a lot of being built right now, which is big brick boxes with very little character, very little attention paid to topography and to the layout. This is going to be a very collaborative effort, all the way from this step, all the way to COs being issued on the house, all being handled and coordinated and approved by the same person. And so, they have a very vested interest in this development going well, just like they do with the building, the finished building product going well. So, we've read staff's report, we understand they approved with those recommendations, which we are fine with. We believe we've addressed all of the neighboring property owners' concerns and respectfully request your approval of this and happy to answer any additional questions you've got.
Anybody have any questions from the, from the board? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This requires a public hearing, so at this time here, I'll set the clock for 10 minutes. Anybody that would like to speak, you'll be given 10 minutes total. So, if one person speaks for 10 minutes, that will be the 10 minutes, or if you have one person speak for one minute, then you get 10 minutes. So, at this time here, I will open the floor up for the public hearing, give you 10 minutes, people that are in favor of this development. I say again, if you're in favor of this development and would like to be heard, please approach the podium, give your name, and you'll be given ample time. Seeing none, hearing none, I now open the floor for 10 minutes of anyone that would like to be in opposition of this development. Please come to the podium, state your name. Seeing none, hearing none, I say the second time the floor is open, for anybody that'd like to be in opposition of this request, come forward. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare that the public session, the public comment, public hearing of this has been complied with, and I would ask the applicant to turn back to the bench, please. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I just got a comment, Chair. Steve, I just appreciate you and Drew how y'all reached out. We worked with the community in that area to make this a great project. I think this is one to be proud of, and I just appreciate y'all and working with me and working with the community on that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you as well, and staff too.
I yield the floor to District 4.
Quick question. What, on condition 11, it says a chain-linked fence will run along the south property line. What's the function of this?
That was a concern that was posed by the neighboring property. He owns all the property to the south and to the west, that whole quadrant there in the corner. And he requested that that fence be up there to protect his activities that he does on his property and people not coming from the subdivision onto his property.
Okay. And I'd like to echo Commissioner Borum. You know, we've been fighting tooth and nail to get the right kind of growth over in Kellytown, and I can appreciate this. Layout's good, road's not straight, we've got some curves in it, layout's wonderful. Your builder, I checked out his products, they're not brick boxes, which is not what we want in Kellytown. So, this fits, frankly, this is what we're looking for in Kellytown.
Okay, great.
Anybody else have any comments? Noted on head recommendation, the zoning advisory board recommended denial of R2, and on September 8th, 2016, they approved R1 Single Family Residential with the following conditions, and they listed 12 of them. If I can get to that page. Now, are you amenable, would you, does your client agree to all of this in the event that the board moves in this direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Somebody want to move and approve the resolution that approves this rezoning request?
This is chairman, I have a motion that we rezon this property from RA to R1 for the property located near the intersection of Airline Road and East Lake Road, east of Airline Road, Land Lot 22 and 43 of the 7th District. Property consists of 26.32 acres, and it said the request is for a single residential subdivision with the 12 conditions.
Have a motion, have a second?
Thanks, sir.
Second District 1, discussion, the only, this might be a play on language, but the resolution in the book that is denying an original rezoning request by this group. So, if you read the resolution, would you be satisfied with the language or you want to take out that denial?
I don't think we're good. We're good.
The original request was for R2, so I think you should
That's correct.
deny that and approve the R1.
That's correct. That needs to be in there, okay.
Okay, I'll amend my
Okay, he's reading the, making a motion to approve the resolution as shown in the book. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Public Carrying, RZ-16-22, Fields Correction Brave Friends LLC of McDonough, Georgia, request rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture to R2 Single Family Residential for the property located at 28 Crumbly Road in Land Lot 7 of the 7th District. The property consists of 2.5 plus or minus acres and request is for a single-family residential development. Dante, good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone two and a half acres, plus or minus, from RA to R2 for the purpose of developing a single-family residential subdivision. The subject property is part of a larger 35-acre tract to its east, south and east, or mostly east. And it's part of that 35-acre proposed development consisting of 36 lots with a minimum of 30,000 square foot as condition per previous zoning back roughly April, May of 2016. And the subject property was previously designated as a potential commercial area in that the initial application removed this acreage, this two and a half acres, from the initial rezoning, suggesting that they were intending for the future to be commercial, but they decided later on that the additional commercial presence was inconsistent with the desired neighborhood character of the area. So, as a result, the developer has reintegrated the two and a half acres of this parcel into the new site plan for the future development of this R2 Single Family Home Subdivision. The future land use map designates the subject property as low-density residential, and that is one to two acres per, one to two density units or dwelling units per acre. And the subject property is also located within the school node activity center, which calls for an average of a gross density of three dwelling units per acre. And so, the school node activity center currently is, has an average of a gross density of 0.36, which means it's under the target threshold, so thereby not meeting the average or the projected average of 3.0 dwelling units per acre. So, on September 8th, the planning and zoning staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval with seven conditions in rezoning the property from RA to R2. And tonight, I present to the Board of Commissioners the zoning advisory board's recommendation of approval of rezoning the property from RA to R2 with the said seven conditions, and I'll place those on the overhead. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody got any comments or questions for Dante? Will the applicant please come forward, please? Please present your case, please.
Hello all, this is Alpes Patel, 124 Glen Eagle Way. This is the, I believe, secondary application. The primary background was we, on this Crumbly Road, 28 Crumbly Road, we were requesting R3 in the last meeting, but we changed it to the R2, we accept the R2. And the parcel in the subject right now, we wanted to leave it for the future offices, medical offices, like a commercial, but as a part of original application, they required us to include this remaining parcel as well in the residential zoning as well. And they approved for R2. So, I guess this is remaining acres or remaining portion, which we left out in the last application for the commercial. We are requesting to rezone for R2. And the construction condition, housing condition, I guess, we outlined it just like what we did it last time. As this parcel is coming in front of the Crumbly Road, there will be some separation, visual separation, because it is coming in the road front. We, I mean, it was not included in the original condition in the last time, but maybe that one was not part of the road front property, this is road front. So, what me and my land engineer was mentioning about giving a 15 feet of planted visual separation, which can be a part of that lot. So, I guess if, so yeah, the highlighted one is the one, and include that So yeah, the highlighted one is the, uh, the one and include that probably, uh, the lot one also, uh, it was part of the original, but, uh, for whatever the land comes in the front of Crumbly Road, we, we can give fifteen foot of buffer, planted buffer, which can be part of the lot. I, I don't want to push the lot back. Uh, just do not make, we would not make any construction in that area, plus we'll do the planted buffer on that. And rest of the thing, we can, I guess, last time in the advisory meeting, there was a, uh, a request, uh, and, and it does make sense that the visual, we, visual impact from the road should be maintained, should be good. That's all, I guess.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, hear ye none. Uh, this, uh, requires a public hearing. I would invite the public, uh, those that's in, uh, favor of this, uh, request, please uh, come to the bench. You'll have ten minutes total, and give us your, uh, position why you favor this request. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Phillips. I live at one-seventy-nine Crumbly Road, uh, which is just about right there, across, across Crumbly Road from the, all of the, uh, properties that, all the residential property that abuts this, this parcel. Well, not this exact parcel, but the, the part that's already been zoned. I'm, uh, speaking on behalf of myself and my husband and several of my neighbors, um, including the abutting homeowners, um, we're in agreement with the R2 zoning as the lesser of the evils in this situation. We appreciate the zoning conditions that, uh, the zoning advisory board suggested for this rezoning, however, um, up until about two minutes ago, uh, there, I believe in the zoning advisory board meeting, there was a condition regarding the buffer along Crumbly, Crumbly Road on this two-and-a-half acre parcel that required it to be, uh, planted in a particular way and for it to be dedicated to the homeowners' association. And I'm just, um, curious, Dante, if you could straighten me out on that, um, condition that the, I believe she's the chairman of the zoning advisory board, placed very detailed condition regarding the, uh, buffer.
That condition can be considered by the board of commissioners tonight, uh, at their, at their discretion to add as an additional condition, but the conditions that we bring here tonight are those that were officially, uh, writ officially recommended by the zoning advisory board, and they mirror the conditions that were placed on the previous property, uh, per Commissioner Prince.
I see. Well, um...
Is that in favor of it?
Uh, I, I, I cannot object to the R2 zoning because of the, because of the other evils that we have to...
Yes, ma'am.
...to, um, consider, but our biggest concern in this particular rezoning is because of the, um, unfortunate oversight in the original rezoning of the major portion of the parcel. There was no buffer of any kind required as a condition of zoning on that parcel. And what we are asking here tonight as a part of the agreement, agreements made, is that the applicant agree to do the right thing here and the decent thing by putting a buffer along, not only along Crumbly Road, which is useful and also advantageous to those lots, but also duplicating, duplicating that same buffer along the northernmost property lines here and along here, wherever the property is adjacent to a, a pre-existing, um, RA residential property. Um, and really just out of respect for the abutting homeowners, and these homeowners have lived here for generations, not just for many years, but for multiple generations, and they've been living here in rural peace and tranquility and security for all those years, and this is, of all of the upsetting things that your mind can come up with, when you're faced with something like this, right in your face is the lack of any buffer requirement along that property line next to the houses. I appreciate you listening to me, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I...
Make a correction to, um, these recommendations and the conditions. Um, in looking through the minutes from the chairman of the, of the zoning advisory board, there is, there was a motion for a buffer, and I'm going to place it on the overhead. It was omitted, uh, by mistake in the resolution, but we will correct that and add it.
So now we're moving into eight...
Yes.
Okay.
So there are eight conditions instead of seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to be heard in favor of this, uh, request?
Since there's nobody else, I might just like to add that I believe this additional condition that Mr. Gibbs has found required that the buffer be, uh, dedicated to the homeowners' association, and I agree with that, uh, just out of practicality as far as making sure nobody, uh, decides one night they want to make their garden bigger, you know? And I, I hope that you'll, um, require that, that condition as well, and I, I hope that the owner will apply that, um, that standard also to other buffers that I hope he will install. That didn't make much sense, but I think you know what I mean.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Dante, uh, could you put that in a form we could understand it about, was that the HOA?
Sure. It will mirror what's there, uh, in that, um, the condition will state, there should, there could, there should be or shall be a thirty-foot lot maintained and owned by the homeowners' association to contain a twenty-foot enhanced buffer which shall contain ten screening shrubs, uh, one large tree, two smaller trees every twenty-five linear feet.
This is also an addition, addition to the condition that stated there could be, could be a thirty-foot lot maintained and owned by the HOA.
That was part of their motion. That was part of the discussion that Chairman Consiglio had, but part of the motion included plantings twenty-five linear feet apart.
That, that paragraph will be, um, condition number eight. Would that be correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to be heard in favor of this? If not, uh, reset the clock for ten minutes. Anybody in opposition of this request, please come forward, state your name. I say again, anybody that's in opposition of this, uh, request, please step forward to the podium, state your name for the record. See ye none, hear ye none. I declare that the public hearing session has been, that requirement has been met, so I would ask the applicant to return to the bench, please, to the podium. Do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I'm Kevin Butler with Land Engineering, uh, representing Mr. Patel. Would like to, to point out that, uh, where we are right here with R2 zoning proposed, uh, per the ULDC, where residential zoning abuts other residential zoning, the, there is not required a buffer to be, uh, implemented in this, in this case. Mr. Patel is conceding for the, the fifteen-foot planted buffer, um, per the ULDC requirements, and I think per that requirement number eight, I believe the, the actual, um, buffer planting is not, uh, in line with what the ULDC spells out, where it's, it's those required plantings but every fifty feet.
...standards for our development regulations and for what we require per our zoning land use policy. And when these applicant, when applications go to the zoning advisory board, it is within their discretion that they can add additional conditions, um, to that, that may be beyond what the minimum standards are in our ULDC. So in essence, what you're looking at is, yes, those are the base, base requirements, but the, the conditions placed on this property, the recommended conditions exceed those.
Right. And the applicant would like to, to have the, uh, the ULDC requirements applied to the property. Also, um, and this is all in section five-point-zero-two-zero-zero of the ULDC, um, the, the ULDC does not require the buffer to be a part of an HOA, that it can be a part of the lot. Um, and traditionally, where we have, uh, subdivision lots like this that would front a new proposed subdivision road, and the rear of the lot or the side of the lot would front a county road or, or public road, uh, that is not a part of the subdivision, there would be a fifteen-foot no-access easement implemented anyway. Uh, and when you combine that with the buffer, I think, uh, there would be no concern as far as the residents encroaching on that buffer once it is implemented.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Got a question for Dante.
Chairman?
I yield the floor to District Three.
Looking at condition four, it says two thousand square feet of floor space. Should that have been heated space?
It is my understanding that that was the intent of that condition, even though it doesn't say heated floors square, heated floor space, um, in that the previous rezoning pertinent to the, the property abutting, the subject property, that's what the condition read, or that's what the condition was as far as how it was written, in that it said twenty square feet of floor space, so we just mirrored that on this property. But if the intent is heated floor space, you should probably clarify that in your motion
Anybody else have any comments? I yield the floor to District Four.
Thanks, Chairman. Well, let me give some background to everybody so they know what was going on. When we first heard this case, this piece of property was cut out and was going to be, um, zoned commercial, and, um, I, that's just not an area that we needed commercially, and so I had told the applicant, please don't try to bring this back commercial, and, uh, I actually appreciate him bringing us back R2. Um, it shows good faith of the developer, and, and that being said, I'm, I'm going to try to work with the developer for not trying to shove R2 down us. But what I'm going to do, I'm going to change a couple of things in the conditions. Um, we've been out, we beat this thing to death on the other side. I, I did, um, you know, I would have liked to have put a buffer on that north side. I, I would strongly recommend to the developer to put up a wood fence on that north side or put some kind of landscape buffer for those residents. They have lived there a very, very long time, and, uh, we need to show them a little respect. So that's just a recommendation. I can't stick that on the rezoning. Um, a couple of things I'm going to change on the, um, conditions. On number two, somewhere in there, I would like to put that they need to be craftsman-style homes. And again, this is Kellytown, we, we do not want the brick boxes. I know that we didn't put that in on the, the others, but we're going to hold this to it. The next thing, um, I'm going to do the fifteen-foot buffer up front as part of the lot. Again, I'm working with the developer, but I am going to work with the neighbors. Um, I would like the, uh, condition to read, uh, with the landscaping that the ZAB recommended. So fifteen-foot buffer, part of lot, landscaping from ZAB. So we're, we're kind of working together there. And that's all I've got as far as the recommendations and everything. Anybody else?
Anybody else have any questions? Would applicant please come forward again, please? There have been several amendments made to the conditions. Are you familiar with that, or should, you want staff to go over them again?
I'm sorry, this is not my, not my field. If you don't mind, can you go over one more time? Appreciate it.
What, what I'm going to do, instead of making you cut that buffer off as a different piece of property, I'm going to have you have that fifteen-foot as part of the lot, so it will help you out with your area. But I am going to make you landscape it like the ZAB recommended, which is a little more stringent than the, uh, ULDC, but it's Kellytown and we're a little more stringent out there. Um, and then, uh, I put in there craftsman style, and what we're trying to get away from are the big brick box houses. Craftsman style would be, um, um, more corners, more, uh, different kind of fascia, different kind of, uh, decorations, not just big box house, so...
Okay, so I believe the, I mean, I live in the Eagles Landing.
Yes.
So, um, is the, all of the houses in the Eagles Landing are like that? What, what is not in the crafts, craftsman style? Is the colonial house in there?
If, if you go to, and I hate to, uh, Crown, have you seen Crowns? Crown Developments?
Uh-huh.
Those are brick boxes.
Okay, well, nobody, if people don't like it, there's no point of building it.
Right. Well, we don't like it. So let's not build it. So that's my recommendation, and Dante, you got all that? Do I need to read all that back?
I have it.
You got it?
I have it.
Okay. Um, I'm going to move, uh, for approval of R2 with the conditions as read, and...
Second District, uh, one, uh, discussion. Are you amenable and agree to all these conditions that's been placed before you?
Yes, sir.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, uh, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Public hearing, RZ sixteen dash twenty-three, Stacy Richardson of McDonough, Georgia, requests for rezoning to C two, general commercial, to M one, light manufacturing, to, for the property located at ten sixty-eight Daily Mill Road, land lot sixty-six of the Seventh District. This property consists of two-point-two acres, and the request is for recce service. For those who's watching, this, uh, item has been removed from the agenda, so if you're here for that, we will not hear this. Public comment. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You will, you must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Each person who addresses the board shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of this board, staff, or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, uh, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting, shall, at the discretion of the chairman or the majority of the board, be barred from further audience before the board during this meeting. Uh, what, what I do is, I take them in order that people signed up. Uh, we've got, um, sixteen. First one we recognize for five minutes would be Jane, uh, Rutledge. Come to the board, state your name, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Chairman Smith.
Could you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Tell me if I'm too loud. Good evening, Chairman Smith, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Barham, Mr. Moss, and Mr. Prince. I am Jane Eskey Rutledge. I live at eight-fifty-eight Honey Creek Road, McDonough, three-oh-two-five-two, in the Ola District area. I have approached the board in the past about Snapping Shoals Road from North Ola to Highway eighty-one east. It has desperately needed to be widened for numerous years. I ask you to allow the road department to begin with splosh, whatever is required, to add a minimum of two feet to each side of Snapping Shoals, and then resurface the road. About two weeks ago, James and I were met by a school bus coming from the Marinette intersection there at the old Buster Jeffries property. The school bus had both wheels over the yellow line on the, the driver's side. That curb has had a fatality that I'm not aware of. The blinking light is there to reduce the speed, but it doesn't matter how much you reduce the speed, you've still got that narrow, narrow road. There's no shoulder there. So if you've got a truck delivering sod... So, if you've got a truck delivering sod, if you've got a lumber truck, you've got a school bus, you've got the old farmer with his dooley, he's right over the yellow line. The width of the road is a safety hazard for all motorists using the road. Also, Honey Creek needs to be resurfaced, and Snapping Shoals needs to be widened and resurfaced. Our police department does a great job in patrolling the area, however, the speeding in the extremely narrow county roads just invites vehicular danger. I know our funds are limited, but I've been down there 12 years since I left Stockbridge through eminent domain. The road ain't got nothing done to it. Ain't got nothing done to it. Also, I want to ask you, the chairman and commissioners, to join me in moving forward tonight to take the necessary procedural steps, to have House Bill 554 rescinded, to restore the powers to Mrs. Carlotta Harold, to Mr. Don Henderson, or to Ms. June Woods, whoever is elected in November, to have the powers that was created by the referendum of 1990. I, to this day, cannot get a understanding, I cannot get an answer as to why House Bill 554 was created. This position of commission chairman, his duties, her duties now, the duties of the countywide chairman, were spelled out, and about 63% of us voted in favor of it. Sad to say, I'm old enough to remember it. I'm not the best historian, but I do remember that this was passed. I can prove that. And I don't understand why the board went to the Henry County delegation of senators and representatives to create and pass 554 with no input from the citizens. The only meeting we had was right here. Senator Emanuel Jones called a meeting, and when I asked Andy Welch, Brian Strickland, Senator Jones, numerous questions that night, I realized, gee, why are we having a meeting? We've already passed the bill, it's on the governor's desk. I understand that House Bill 554 started with the boards of commissioners approaching the delegation. Why do we circumvent the voters' desires, and why, with a stroke of a pen, did we create 554? I know you can't answer me, but I cannot get enough information to find this out. I'm not the brightest, but I'm not the dumbest. I just moved to Ola, okay? Through eminent domain. The transparency needs to be restored, the integrity needs to be restored, to where the voters' rights come first, not the wish of the machine of Henry County. And I am going to try to meet with each and every one of you within the next week and find out your reasoning as to why, and help me understand why this happened. Thank you, and I appreciate what you're doing, but I would expect an answer.
Time is up.
Good evening, Chairman Smith.
Good evening.
And the remainder of the board, I'd like to speak on Shining Light Ministries. Back in July, there was a meeting with you, Commissioner Smith, and you, Mr. Moss, along with some other department heads, along with the county manager, where Shining Light was required to, or asked to, put in an application for a boarding house in order for them to become licensed and operating legally by August 2nd. They did that by that time, but they didn't do the business application, the business license application, and you all, a couple of days after this meeting, had selective memory, like amnesia, where nobody remembered telling them that they needed to get a business license, as if this is something somebody needs to do. But since that time, they withdrew that request for the boarding house, and they have now requested a, an assisted living facility, and they delayed that request until, to be heard, until November, which means they're still operating without a license, without any type of title of any sort, with one house that has no type of conditional use or anything. And since that time, we were trying to work with them after our meeting, and they have since hired an attorney who is a state representative that represents all of us here, that has chosen to fight the people that pay him, to represent, to support this corporation in being able to operate next to our homes against the neighbors that live in this community. And as a result, we've had to, as the neighbors, we've had to come out of our pockets and pay for an attorney in order to continue to fight this thing. I don't understand why, as public citizens, with a business that's operating illegally, this business is continuing to operate as they are, not licensed, not certified as anything, as a lockdown facility, doing drug and alcohol treatment and detoxing that they are not licensed or certified to do. As a result, we've had to come out of our pockets, which we don't think is fair. And at this point, they keep getting these extensions to be able to run, and I'm hoping at this point, next month, when this final hearing comes before you guys, that you all take in consideration and consider the citizens and the neighbors that are being affected by this drug and alcohol treatment center that wants to be developed next door to my house, literally next door to my house, and take the action that's in the best interest of the community, rather than what's best for this corporation being to trying to retrofit it into our, into our neighborhood. And I just hope that you all would do whatever you can to give this serious consideration and give the consideration to the neighbors, into the community, rather than to this illegally operated business that has continued to operate. Everything that they say they're going to do, they don't do. They've changed their minds about what they are doing, and I just hope that you all consider this and give it the serious consideration that it needs next month. And I thank you for letting me be heard tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and fellow commissioners. My name is Kimberly Del Rosario, and I'm here to speak out against Shining Light Ministry also. I too took time out of my busy day to come to a meeting with you, Chairman Smith, and you, Commissioner Moss. We were trying to negotiate, tried to agree. That's what you had us there for. We were working on a plan with Rocky from Shining Light Ministries. We were making some progress. We were willing to give a little, to make peace, because peace is such a better place to live. The last minute, they hired an attorney, like Ms. Pierre pointed out, an attorney that my tax dollars pay for, my tax dollars. Ms. Pierre, every working citizen pays that person. I appreciate pro bono attorneys, I do, but not when that attorney represents people in my community. I have a huge problem with that. So, therefore, we were forced to go hire our own attorney. So, therefore, I am paying my taxes to pay for a pro bono attorney for something I don't believe in, and money out of my child's pocket to an attorney to represent us because we got nowhere. We met with you guys, we met with everybody that you had us to meet with, and we met with the representatives of Shining Light Ministries to try to get somewhere. It's not fair. It has never been fair. I moved to this community because of it being residential agriculture. I have a garden, I have a farm, and I have a child. I moved here because I want tranquility, I want peace, I want to be safe. I don't have that anymore. I'm not against anybody, I'm not against help, but it does not need to be where it is located. Shining Light has proved that they do not do what is asked. They don't do what has been put out forth to them that they need to have done. I wish the ministry well. It's nothing against them personally, but I don't feel safe with a ministry that has ran this many years with no license whatsoever. How can I explain to a 13-year-old child where we're talking about the legislator, executive, and all the different branches of government, and my daughter has come in here and listened to you guys, that they keep pulling and pulling and pulling every time we get close to something, that that's how Henry County chooses to run? I'm a Georgia resident, I have been for 46 years. My daughter is a Georgia resident. I would love to stay in Henry County, and I plan on it. I plan on staying on my happy little RNA, almost five-acre lot, and I will leave that for my child one day. But we're asking for you guys to do the right thing. We've tried to do the right thing. We've tried to work with our community. You know, we've tried to give a lot, too, but you can't explain to a kid that every time you say, hey, by this date, we're going to have a resolution, and then snap, the day of it, it gets pulled? What kind of faith are we instilling in tomorrow's future generation in Henry County? I can't give you an answer for that, but I can give you the answer from my child. My child wanted to get up here and speak tonight. She's in tears, but her cry out to you is, do what's right for her and our community, because she will be the future leader of tomorrow. All these children in this county will be the leaders. They'll be our attorneys, they'll be our commissioners, they'll be whatever they please. But we're not showing them effectively how this county runs, and it is very beharred to me to know that I've lived in this state my whole life and don't know anything different, but I depend on you guys, and I hope you do the right thing, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having me. First off, commissioners, I understand that I'm not from this county, but I'm having problems with the county I do live in, and it involves, it involves corruption in our court. I'm here specifically because I saw a film on Mr. Barham, and I thank your son for his service, and that's coming from a former beret myself. I heard the video, I saw the video, and I feel you feel obligated to the veteran. You said you would do whatever you could, if possible, to help the veteran. Veterans are under attack. I have proof of that from people in our government. I'm not going to stand here and classify who, but I do have it on transcript that we were. I'm here asking you all, is it possible to put me in front of a grand jury and let me verify my claim and produce my evidence? My evidence goes all the way to the people in the Capitol. I'm sorry to say, but every time you have a group, an organization, doesn't matter how big it is, who it is, you can have a couple of guys that like to ride motorcycles, get together, and real good time. You throw 400 of them together, you have corruption. It's the same thing. Our government has gotten so bloated that they can't govern themselves, let alone the people, is the way it appears to me. And my family has been victim of the incident that I'm recalling to. It's, I can't find the justice. My evidence, like I said, go all the way to the Capitol. It goes to three judges in Pike County trying to cover up the incident, the fraud and conspiracy, the kidnapping under color of law, Article 3, Section 2. Supreme Court says, Constitution is the law of the land, and it's supported very well, very well, by Marbury versus Madison. I believe it's 5103 U.S. Code, 1801. Hasn't been overturned in over 200 years. It still stands. I just am reaching out, any direction I can. I am part of the community as far as the state of Georgia. With all the conflict of interest, all the officers in my county involved, and knowing that this wrongful action took place, we are still victims of the irrefutable harm that was caused and that is still causing us. There was publication ran in the newspaper, the Atlanta Journal, I mean, the Pike Journal, excuse me, January 6, 2016, and it gives defamation of character, flat out. These people knowingly, my request and why I'm here is to reach out to you all, being neighborly kind of communities, to see if there's any way possible that you can put me before the grand jury. So, I ask, I don't need a lawyer, I don't want a lawyer, none of that stuff. I'm a man, and that's what I tend to claim myself to be, and always will be, as I was born as, a man. People don't understand in the laws we have today, a running under Nessie Prius Courts, a court of no record. Many people are going to jail, many veterans are being attacked and their families. I hold myself pretty high on the list, being an honorably discharged sergeant, being a cadre in the 3rd and 1st, 7th, 101st Airborne Infantry Division, and serving the 1st of the 508 Infantry Division, paratrooper, and I've taken that extra step to show that I mean what I say, and when I say something, I mean it. It's, my evidence fits under the federal rules of evidence, being authentic, original, copy of original, recording and photos. There's no denying that we were done wrong. Now, I'm reaching out to all the people I can, and I will be traveling to other counties looking for the same thing. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to speak on item, what was item 17? It's been moved up on the agenda to item, just after item 11, I believe it is. This is a request on behalf of, really, the Technical College System of Georgia. Commissioner Corbin is here tonight with Randall Peters, Dr. Peters, who's the president of the Southern Crescent Technical School that's located here in McDonough. They are here tonight, and they will hopefully be speaking to you a little bit later on. But this is, the item that you have before you is a request to achieve a partnership that this county entered into when it adopted a SLOSH project, a funding of $5 million towards a technical college facility, an industrial arts facility, no less, and I'm here to speak on that and ask for your favorable consideration of that resolution that's before you. That would authorize expenditure through an easement agreement between the county and the properties division of the state, so that that $5 million can go to match 16, 16.1 million of state money to build the industrial arts facility with over eighty thousand square feet of space. That's a very important investment in our community for a very number of reasons. One of which is that in Henry County, what we are seeing is a fairly stagnant workforce. We continue to lag behind all of our ARC counties in terms of employment opportunities for our citizens here in Henry County. And right now, we're at an unemployment rate of five point four percent. It has stagnated over the last thirty days. We have lost over four hundred jobs within the last thirty days. We're not employing people, we're not putting them to work. And the technical system here, the Technical College, is there to help adults and young people secure technical skills, skills that will enable them to be a part of the Henry County workforce, so that they can be employed in the industries that we have in Henry County. But in the future, what we need to be thinking about is how are we going to employ the future populations that continue to grow? The county is growing at a clip of six point eight percent over the last four years. So your unemployment rate still is stagnant, your population growth is continuing. We have to be able to provide jobs for the next generation. That comes in the form of good-paying jobs in the manufacturing sector. The industrial arts facility that's being proposed, that you have committed money to, is there to provide that training for those manufacturing jobs of the future. You all, all of you, I think, have been here long enough to remember when Snapper Motors was a central manufacturing facility in McDonough. For decades, that was a heartbeat of employment for our community. We have lost, it was transferred over to Briggs and Stratton, and it has since closed down. We are not prepared as a community to train a manufacturing workforce for those kinds of employers and to attract those kinds of employers back to Henry County. This facility that's being proposed, and this partnership with the state, will enable us as a community to train our own citizens here in Henry County and others to be a part of that future workforce, that manufacturing workforce. A vote in favor of this is a vote to keep a promise made. A vote in favor of this is a vote to keep a promise made to the constituents and the future generations of Henry County and to the state of Georgia. A vote in favor of this is to train a workforce to be prepared to take on better-paying jobs in the manufacturing sector of this community. A vote in favor of this is a vote in favor of our children and the children that will come ahead of them. We're asking you, I'm asking you, and I think many others will be here before you tonight, to ask for your favorable consideration of the resolution that's before you, that you will vote for it, and that you'll be supporting the workforce and the ongoing education of our children and the partnership that we have with the state, which is very unique. And Director, Commissioner Corbin will speak to that, and I believe the President of the College will also speak to some of the more specifics of that, what that school will provide. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Mills.
My name is Jeff Mills. I live at one sixty-five Jackson Street, Locust Grove, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the same resolution that Mr. Welch just spoke of. And I come tonight in two capacities. I'm a member of the Board of the Academy for Advanced Studies, which is Henry County's College and Career Academy, which is located approximately one quarter of a mile from the Southern Crescent Technical College McDonough campus, where this building would be located. I'm also the leader of the Workforce Development Team of the One Henry Economic Development Alliance. And these two interests are intimately involved, intimately related to the issue at hand, because the workforce development synergy that already exists between the Academy and the Technical College will be materially accelerated and multiplied by the addition of this second building to the campus. Ask any economic development professional, and they will tell you that the number-one criteria for making a selection of where to locate a business, an industry, or to expand an existing industry, is the availability of a skilled workforce to meet their workforce needs. I believe that the addition of the second building will materially enhance the realization of meeting those workforce development demands that Mr. Welch just spoke of. So I urge you to remove any administrative impediments to its construction that may exist, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Randall Peters.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Dr. Randall Peters. I'm the President of Southern Crescent Technical College with a campus here in McDonough, and I am also here to speak on the same subject and request your favorable consideration of the resolution. The facility that we're talking about is planned for about eighty-two thousand-plus square feet and will house a number of programs that surveys have told us the community in and around Henry County, and specifically for this facility, are necessary. And you will hear others speak about workforce development, about economic development, but I want to talk about personal development. What I get to see every day as the President of the College is the change in potentials and capabilities and futures of our students. We have a great demand for this campus. In the last year and three semesters, we had about thirteen hundred students in the one building that presently exists. In the current semester tonight, there are over six hundred and seventy students enrolled alone. And if we go the two more semesters, you'll see the amount of growth that we're talking about. So there's a great demand. But the issue is, when a student comes to us, many times, they have very few options in the workplace. We are able to provide them with a skill set that allows them to go to work, and when we do that, it changes their, literally, changes their future. It changes their children's future. When I was doing the research for my doctorate, I came upon a statistic that children whose parents are college graduates are more than eighty percent likely to go to college themselves. And when you look at children who grew up in homes where there are no college graduates, those percentages fall dramatically. My request to you is to consider the changes that happen on that personal scale, on a generational scale, permanently and irrevocably to those students. Your favorable consideration of this resolution will enable us to put that eighty-two thousand square foot building on the ground. It is nearly complete in planning. We are almost ready to do the groundbreaking, to begin construction. We need your approval of this resolution to be able to proceed. Thank you for allowing me to be here, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. John Euston.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and the remainder of the chairmans. My name is John Esler, and I have the privilege of serving as CEO of the Academy for Advanced Studies, the Henry County College and Career Academy. And it is such a wonderful opportunity to be able to provide a learning experience for the students of Henry County, to prepare them for the future. The Academy for Advanced Studies is a college and career academy, which is a different way of doing education for high school students. The purpose of the Academy for Advanced Studies is to provide opportunities of learning for students that they can't get in their home schools. The mission of the Academy is to ensure that our students are college and career-ready upon graduation from high school, and we do that in a lot of different ways. One way is we have the opportunity to provide forty-two different career pathways for students to explore before they get out of high school. That's more than any other college and career academy across the state of Georgia, and that gives our students a chance to really get a handle on their future careers. One of the other opportunities that we have with the Academy for Advanced Studies is unique partnerships. Unique partnerships with the Henry County Chamber of Commerce, the Henry County Development Authority, and more importantly, our post-secondary partners located here within Henry County to provide unique opportunities for these students. Before I go into those partnerships, particularly with Southern Crescent Technical College, which is absolutely critical to the Academy for Advanced Studies, you need to know the successes that we're having now. In three short years of service of students from Henry County, we went from serving twelve hundred students roughly in our first year of operation to serving over twenty-two hundred students across the county. That's from all ten high schools. We are serving, in those students, we are able to brag about a ninety-eight and a half percent graduation rate, which we experienced last year with the seniors that are participating. And one of the reasons why students are being so successful in our program is because of the opportunities that a school like Southern Crescent Technical College offers. Forty-two career pathways are great. What Building Two and the resolution, hopefully, that you will support here tonight, will bring to the students of Henry County are additional opportunities for our high school students to be able to gather experiences that will lead them on into the careers that will be their passions and not just a job. What Southern Crescent brings to the table is a whole lot more. This year, we have over four hundred and twenty-five students participating in dual enrollment. About a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty of those students are dual enrollment students through Southern Crescent Technical College. When you look at the economic impact for this semester alone that that's having on Henry County, is that's giving, those parents have saved upwards of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in tuition costs that students will not have to pay once they get out of high school and proceed into their education like Southern Crescent plans to offer. Henry County's school system is very committed to the program. They passed a SPOLOST just last March, and they're going to build a new McDonough High School, which will then move Henry County High School out and will allow us to expand within the current facility that we're using. In addition, they have committed a million dollars to putting a connecting road in between us and the Southern Crescent campus. The reason that that is so important is because of that seamless education from secondary to post-secondary and into life that we're providing for our students. We can't do it without the unique partnerships. Those partnerships have been built across this county for the last seven years, and the strategic partnership that Southern Crescent brings to the table is just huge. Again, I would like to encourage you to vote in favor of the resolution that you're going to be speaking about tonight, because what it's about is it's about changing students' lives, as Dr. Peters said, and giving them a glimpse into what their futures can be, and that's so important to what we do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight. I'm David Gill. I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Henry County Chamber of Commerce at seventeen twenty Highway Twenty West in McDonough, and I too solicit your favorable support for this resolution or whatever you will adopt. I'm not going to go into the value of the college. Others have certainly said that more eloquently than I would, but I can say I'm very proud of the Chamber's role in helping get that here. But what I would like to say is, when you included support of the second building of this campus in the SPOLOST for project list, and the citizens of Henry County validated that by their votes, it sent the Technical College System of Georgia and the state of Georgia a powerful message that this community supports education. It was one of the Chamber of Commerce's most important legislative agenda items to get Building Two funded, and I will say that we had hundreds of citizens who worked on this project over time. But I'd also like to say that when SPOLOST came out, because of the money included in SPOLOST and other reasons, the Chamber led the effort to have citizens pass this. And we brought with it not only funding for Building Two, but we brought the thirty-two million dollars for the public safety, forty-two million dollars for quality of life issues, a hundred and two million dollars for transportation, and totaling an estimated a hundred and ninety million dollars of projects to Henry County citizens. We worked on the passage of that, and we helped deliver a favorable vote for SPOLOST for our citizens, because we believed that the value of this school was important to our economic well-being. And so tonight, I would say you have a responsibility to the citizens to fulfill the commitments you made on August the sixth of two thousand and thirteen, when each of you, with the exception, I guess, of Commissioner Prince, voted unanimously to include this money. And you made a commitment to the citizens of Henry County that if they would pass this SPOLOST, that that money would be available, and it would help make this school a reality. And it will also confirm the representation we made to the citizens when we went out and worked so diligently to solicit passage of SPOLOST for. So I would say I encourage you to, once again, unanimously support this, because that will endorse what you've said is so important to so many citizens of Henry County. I will say I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, but this also represents my personal opinion, and I have in the audience tonight many members of our Board of Directors, and I'd like to ask those members of our Board and other people who support this, who are not going to be able to be up here, just to stand up and show you that the citizens of Henry County want to see this accomplished. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Charlie Mosley.
My name is Charlie Mosley. I'm here this evening representing the Development Authority. The number-one challenge facing companies in Henry County is finding qualified workers to fill skilled positions. Whether it's running high-tech equipment in an advanced manufacturing facility or using the latest software to track shipments in an ever-expanding global supply chain, whether it's operating medical laboratory equipment or writing code to build a financial technology security program, the jobs of the future are available in Henry County today, and they require special skills and training in order to be successful. There's a great phrase that I like to use from Jeff Mills, who spoke earlier, "Henry graduates for Henry jobs and Henry jobs for Henry graduates." It's simple and it's catchy, but it also illustrates the connection between the kinds of companies we are able to attract and the kinds of jobs we're able to help make available to the citizens of Henry County. The phrase workforce development encompasses many things, and it stretches really from elementary school all the way up through our colleges and universities. It's a massive undertaking to stay current in a world that is constantly shifting around us in terms of technology and the skills required to gain successful employment. Perhaps most importantly, though, it requires partnerships. The Henry County School System partners with the Technical College System of Georgia, and both partner with our university system to create pathways to jobs of the future. We are so fortunate in Henry County to have not only a model college and career academy in our Academy for Advanced Studies, but also the presence of Southern Crescent Technical College. At the Development Authority, we work so closely with our local Southern Crescent Center, it's hard to imagine just a few short years ago, this county didn't have any physical technical college presence. Our citizens had to travel to other communities to get the training they needed to be competitive in the job market, and our existing industries had to send their employees outside of Henry County for training. But thanks to the efforts of many people here, including those made by the E-Squared Initiative and Henry County Schools, we now have the first of what will be an eight-building campus for Southern Crescent Technical College right here in our community. The second building will be more than twice the size of Building One and will offer programming for the most high-demand career fields, including advanced manufacturing and healthcare. The promise of this investment by the community and our partners at the Technical College System of Georgia has been invaluable in the Development Authority's recruitment of new industry to Henry County. So far this year, our Development Authority has been fortunate to work with a number of growing companies that will create new jobs and investment, and in fact, we've seen the commitment of over fifteen hundred new jobs and over three hundred million dollars of new investment. In an economy that is increasingly competitive and demanding, these companies felt confident in our investment in workforce development, that it would help supply the skilled labor force that they need to be successful and grow. Tonight, this Board has a technical matter to resolve so that the construction of the second building on our Southern Crescent campus may move forward. As you all know, this investment was supported countywide in a SPOLOST referendum back in two thousand and thirteen. Thanks in large part to the work of our legislative delegation, the funding and construction schedule for this new facility arrived even sooner than we anticipated. And I'm proud of all the work we've done as a united community to bring this facility home for our citizens. And I'm grateful to Governor Deal and Commissioner Corbin at the Technical College System for their leadership and support. As we move our workforce development efforts forward, the programs offered by Southern Crescent at this facility will provide the citizens of Henry County with an opportunity to gain valuable skills and land jobs in growing fields. They can stay home in Henry County, start families, and continue building this community into an even better place to live, work, and play. I hope you'll support tonight's agenda item, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gretchen Corbin.
Good evening, Commissioner Smith. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see all of you, members of the Board of the Commission in Henry County. It's very nice to be with you this evening. My name is Gretchen Corbin. I'm the Commissioner of the Technical College System of Georgia, and I'm responsible for all of our 22 colleges on our 85 campuses around the state of Georgia. And as you know here, I'm of course here to speak and ask for your favorable considerations of tonight's agenda item. And I think most importantly, I would like to say thank you for your partnership, not only as Commissioner of the Technical College System of Georgia, but also working with our county government and our elected officials as Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, also as Deputy Commissioner of Economic Development in my current roles. Henry County has a very special place in my heart. Henry County is a community that we know that the state of Georgia is not only a good partner, but is full of growth, quality growth. You are poised for growth. You've experienced growth, and you will continue to consider growth. And in this, you are making such great decisions, and we enjoy being a part of those wonderful decisions. As Mr. Mosley just spoke to the number of jobs that have committed to your community over the past year, we know that with those decisions, as he mentioned, the most important decision is workforce development, skilled labor for these companies, and highly skilled and trained and motivated individuals to work in these great positions. So when companies tell us that the most important thing to them is a skilled workforce, we know it's our job to partner with communities to provide the education necessary. When we talk about partnerships in community, not just with the Board of Commissioners, the Development Authority, but specifically our K-12 partners, our university partners, our legislative delegation, everybody here that makes things work in Henry County, we appreciate you. We have an exciting opportunity, an opportunity to build our number-two building on this great campus here. And I will tell you, as Commissioner, we only do approximately, we only build approximately two buildings a year on 85 campuses. So this is an incredible opportunity to continue the momentum that you have begun with our first building going into a full campus here in Henry County if you desire. Our Representative Welch spoke to a $16 million commitment. Mr. Chairman, that has really grown to a $20 million commitment, and we hope that you, again, will look favorably upon tonight's agenda item to continue the funding that you have committed to so that we can grow that for an 80,000 to an 82,000-square-foot facility here in Henry County. We're committed. We're committed for the long haul. We will be here, and, you know, on behalf of Governor Deal, on behalf of the entire Technical College System of Georgia, on behalf of Southern Crescent, one of the best 22 technical colleges, we are committed to be your partner, and we look forward to your favorable, we ask, we respectfully ask, and look forward to your favorable consideration of this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you. Kathy S. Butler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. My name is Taifa Butler, and I am currently the Executive Director of the Georgia Budget and Policy Institute in Atlanta, but I am also a citizen of this county, and I live at 268 Ironwood Drive in Stockbridge in District Five. I am here today to support my neighbors and my colleagues, to ask for your favorable consideration of the resolution before you for the Technical College System. Just last week, I was asked to be the keynote speaker for the National Council for Workforce Education, which had their annual meeting here in Atlanta, or in Atlanta, and the theme of that conference was keeping the promise of workforce education. And my keynote address was about access, and how do we ensure that the citizens of this state, of this community, of anywhere can benefit from access to a great technical school, community college, or even a four-year institution? The governor and the Technical College System, Commissioner Corbin, have set laudable goals to graduate 250,000 more students by 2025 to meet our workforce demands. Businesses have told us in this state that we need a more skilled workforce, and what better way to provide access to the citizens of Henry County is to be able to expand the Technical College here at Southern Crescent and be able to provide those classrooms and those facilities and those courses that would really help improve the skill set of the citizens here. And so I just wanted to underscore, everybody's already said so articulately, what we need in this community, and I would just ask again for your favorable consideration to ensure that we do keep the promise of workforce education here in Henry for the citizens who desperately, desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Moore.
Well, after two years of indecision, it's finally good to be free. I too respect the blue line. I don't think America would be America if we didn't realize that we need the blue line. But we need a blue line that's fair to everybody. When I started my journey with this crazy lawsuit we went through, you know, in America, you're supposed to be innocent until proven guilty. But through these, a lot of morons today, you know, they think you're guilty until you're proven innocent. And when the, I was hoping Mr. Nichols would be here tonight.
You need to address your comments to the board.
I was really hoping he was, and because, you know, when I had this situation arrive, I got an email about somebody threatening using guns and killing people. And so I went to, what I normally do, I went to the Henry County Police Department, and I filed the complaint, and I got names, and I even emailed it so I'd make sure I got a copy, and I never heard anything else again. And see, this trial, this trial went on for two years. You'd ask for a speedy trial. I thought that was in America, you could get a speedy trial, couldn't get one in Henry County. So after two years, and finally getting in court and proving that I'm acquitted of all charges, it was a foolish thing that should have never even got there, but it still doesn't negate the fact that the blue line doesn't even, don't even attach a number to it or call you back or do anything about it. So after I got acquitted, I even went back and said, "Why didn't you do something?" And the major said, "Well, you didn't get a number attached to you." I said, "Well, that ain't my, that's your fault, not mine. That's what you're supposed to do, not me." But he still hasn't done anything. But, you know, I didn't expect him to do anything to start with, to be honest with you. I had a nice, brand-new 16-foot covered trailer pulled up in front of my school on Walker Drive seven years ago. I got the title in my office and everything for it, and it was pulled off that weekend, never to return, and I've never heard one thing from the police department. So, you know, it's a sad day when we pay the taxes in Henry County that we pay, and we have to put up with that kind of incompetence in this day and age. Now, here's the problem, Mr. Chairman. If they'll, I spent 50 years building up a reputation, and I'm proud of mine. I'll stand up against anybody. But if they'll treat me like that, what will they treat somebody out here on the street that doesn't have anything? If they'll treat me like that, what will they treat your wife and your children like when you step out of office? That's an abomination. That's a sin. I'll take care of Larry, but who's going to take care of the poor and the oppressed? It's kind of like a black gentleman told me the other night at my house. He said, "When I walk out of the house at night, I feel like a, one of them bank machines, like I'm being treated like a express money." Is that what we want to be known of in Henry County? I would hope so. Let me say this on education. I don't know if anybody's not for the education, but if we haven't a closed school somewhere else to bring it here, that's a shame. And if we don't use that $5 million in a real, careful way, we'll waste it. So it's incumbent upon us as leaders in Henry County to make the blue line do their job, make departments do their job, so that our people that pay these taxes don't feel like they are oppressed and not treated fairly.
Thank you. Say again. I yield the floor to District Four.
I'm rather proud of our police department. Thank you for your service, son. Thank you, guys. I've seen what you go through. I appreciate you. I yield the floor, Chairman.
Mr. Steve Cash. You're a farmer.
Chairman Smith, Commissioners. I want to say one thing real quickly. I appreciate what y'all do for our community. I commit, I appreciate the commitment, the dedication, the time y'all put through it. I know. I've been there, and I've done that, and I thank each and every one of you for what you do. Thank you so much. I am Steve Cash. I'm Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth. Just to go back a couple of years, I was appointed to the countywide SPOS Committee by my Commissioner Bruce Holmes at that time, and I was very privileged to do that. And then my peers, after our first meeting, I was privileged to be elected to be the Chair of the SPOS Committee. Now, this SPOS Committee met at least 13 times, probably one or two more times more, and we met twice in every district in the county. During these meetings, we had grassroots efforts of the people, the citizens of Henry County, to come up and say, "Hey, I think we need to consider this, consider that," to improve the quality of life in Henry County. You know, to improve the quality of life in Henry County, you have to improve the education, improve economic growth, in our case, improve transportation to improve the quality of life in Henry County. So we met each week. Each week we met, and each week, there were citizens that came to our SPOS meetings, and they spoke, they testified about the importance of Southern Crescent and the potential opportunity to build a new building. Now, we had different citizens speak that every week, every week. So it came time to vote as the SPOS Committee. We accepted, and we accepted their testimony, we accepted their desires, and it was later the desires of the committee as we voted to say, "Hey, we want skin in the game. We're going to recommend, we're going to transmit our desires as a SPOS Committee to the Board of Commissioners." And at that time, many things were presented to them. But the $5 million was allocated to go toward Southern Crescent, was voted on by you folks except for Commissioner Prince. We did campaign hard, the Council for Quality Growth did, along with the Chamber of Commerce, and like David Gill did say, that the people of Henry County voted for these projects, whether it be capital projects or whether it be district-wide projects, transportation projects whatsoever. So I'm here tonight to ask your favorable consideration for this resolution. If we did not do that, if the SPOS Committee did not meet for 13 weeks and have these people come and testify, these citizens come testify, and if the SPOS Committee didn't accept it and agreed to transmit it on to y'all, we wouldn't be here tonight. There wouldn't be $20 million being handed to us to improve the quality of life in Henry County through education. So again, I want to ask you for your favorite vote, and again, I thank you, I thank you for your service to the community, and officers, thank you too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Rod Medes.
Gentlemen, in my 40 years in six weeks of practice here in Henry County, it's been my pleasure to work with a lot of you on a lot of different things in representing the hospital authority and the Development Authority. And the previous speakers have been very clear about the significance of your vote tonight, but as a lawyer, I recognize that what you're doing is being very, very careful about a technical requirement that is contained within the resolution that was involved here. And I want to commend the work that's been done by the county attorney and the care that was taken by soliciting an opinion from the Attorney General's Office, which indicates that the legal requirements of the resolution in regard to the delivery of this $5 million to the technical school system is appropriate under both the opinions of your county attorney and the Attorney General. And I urge you to utilize those opinions in reaching your decision to support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Don Dunlap.
My name's Don Dunlap. I'm at 192 Ashley Drive in McDonough. Chairman and Commissioners, I was a big supporter of this most recent special-purpose local option sales tax, in large part because of Building Two of Southern Crescent's Henry Campus. I'm asking that the board will help facilitate the release of the county's SPOS money to the Technical College System of Georgia by adopting a resolution to accept an easement as a method of ensuring sufficient county interest in the real estate to effect that transfer during this evening's meeting. Thank you for your service to the community through this action.
Thank you. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Bill Tony for 15 minutes.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. I'd like to clarify some stuff about the attacks on the citizens of the county by officials, by elected officials, local, you guys, by senators and everything else. We got to put a stop to this attacking people. You can't do it. We get up here, we have a First Amendment right. We get up here. I wish more people would get up and speak, but I think y'all have got them so afraid that nobody hardly will get up here and speak unless they're lobbying for something or whatever. So I'd like to kind of give an example of what I'm talking about from past meetings and so forth. We got a little short video here. Thank you very much.
I'd like to come back next meeting, if you don't mind. I'm on, we've got some technical stuff here that we're going to just come to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Resolution authorized and acceptance of an easement to authorize funding for the Technical College Building for the SPOLOSS four resolution. Patrick Gockstetter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to give a little bit of background to fill in some of the gaps on the public comments. In November of 2013, the voters approved the SPOLOSS, the current SPOLOSS program. Included as part of your SPOLOSS program was your Resolution 13-181. Resolution 13-181 contained your SPOLOSS project list. Within that resolution was an allocation of five million dollars to fund a technical college building or a technical school building within Henry County. That project was conditioned upon the conveyance of a valid property interest to the county and the municipality by the state of Georgia or an instrumentality thereof. The resolution did not define what a valid property interest was. It didn't say what type of valid property interest it was. It merely requires that there be a valid property interest conveyed. The Technical College System of Georgia is undergoing or will undergo construction of the school building if the Board approves this resolution. They will fund, my understanding is, twenty million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars towards construction. The county will contribute five million dollars towards that construction. The Technical College System will be utilizing state general obligation bond funds, and Georgia law would prohibit them from using those bond funds on property owned by anyone other than the state. So the first discussion I had with the Technical College was, "We need to own the property." And their response was, "We cannot deed you the property and contribute our twenty million dollars because the law won't allow us to do it." So we then looked for a way to make this happen, and the way we concluded was that there is an exception to the law which would allow the state to convey to us an easement. It's actually, the state owns the property, the Technical College doesn't own the property, the state of Georgia owns the property. They are allowed to convey to us an easement, convey to the county an easement despite the fact that the project is being funded by general obligation bond funds. So I did some research on the matter, and I concluded that that would satisfy the language of the resolution. I asked the Attorney General's Office to review my opinion, which is one of the ways they will give an opinion. They reviewed my opinion, their response is in your packet, they were agreed with me that it would be a valid property interest, and that would satisfy the legal requirement of the resolution. But it's still left for you to decide if that's the property interest that this Board wants. And the resolution before you asked for you to make a choice. You will either accept an easement in satisfaction of that resolution, or you will require there be fee simple title conveyed. I will warn you that is my understanding that if we require fee simple title to be conveyed, it won't happen, it can't happen. And the Technical College will be left with the decision as to whether or not to fund this building or whether or not to reduce the size of the building to take out the five million dollars the county was going to contribute. It's my understanding, and perhaps someone from the Technical College can confirm this, that the plans are completed, permits are in hand, there is a construction manager hired who has bid out the work, and the work is ready to proceed once this issue is resolved and once the funding issues are resolved, in hopes that the construction will be completed in time to put students in the building in January. And that's why there's been some, January of eighteen, not this coming January. That's why there's been some urgency in getting this matter to the Board to resolve the issue of whether or not an easement will satisfy that resolution. And that's all we're asking the Board to do today. All we're asking the Board to do at this meeting is tell us whether or not we can proceed with doing what we're going to have to do to free up the money and move this project forward on the county's end, knowing that an easement will be sufficient. We still have to determine exactly where the boundaries of the easement are, we still have to draft the easement, we will have to draft, and the Board will have to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Technical College. And the way the easement will get presented is it will have to go through the State Properties Commission. There's a notice requirement. It's to shorten the process. Because the value of this easement is low, it doesn't have to go to the full General Assembly for approval, it goes to the local legislative delegation, a handful of other organizations, and at some point, the State Properties Commission can vote on granting that easement. So there's a lot of work to be done after this resolution today. This resolution simply tells us all, let's proceed on the basis of an easement, let's get this project moving. And that's the resolution in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions I can answer. I've tried, I know you've all heard about it, we've discussed this either directly with the Board members or through email with the Board members. I think you've heard this evening as much discussion about the project as you will probably tolerate, but I'm happy to answer any questions I can answer, and if I can't answer them, I'll find the right person to answer them.
I yield the floor to District Three.
I don't really have a question, but it's just a comment. We've heard some very good comments today on this matter, and there's no question about how important this is to the economic growth of Henry County. You know, talking with some city officials, I know Representative Welch mentioned Snapper, which is Bridges Stratten, and talking to some of the city officials, they told me that the people from Bridges Stratten had told them before they shut down, if we would have had this Technical College in at that particular time, they would have stayed in Henry County. And it was a big loss for us to lose Snapper, Bridges Stratten. So I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and I look forward to us doing what the voters ask us to do.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? I yield the floor to District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to take a minute, so sorry, everybody. Dr. Peters, you mentioned technical school changing people's futures. Let me tell you my story. After I got out of high school, I lacked direction, if you will. Really didn't know what I wanted to do, kind of just flailed about. I ended up going to Southern Crescent and taking your drafting program. After I took your drafting program, I started talking to some recruiters and ended up that the Air Force would give me credit, and I could come in as an E3 in the Air Force, which I did. And while I was in basic training, they went through my transcripts again, saw that I had drafting experience, and put me in the Civil Engineering Squadron in the Air Force. And this in turn led to my love for design and engineering and construction, which again, you know, led me to a mathematics degree, a civil engineering degree, I'm working on a master's in structural engineering. But ironically, when I left my office today, it was drawing on a computer that Southern Crescent taught me how to do. So you talk about it changing lives, it does, because I would not be sitting here right now had it not been for your school. So, thank you. Now, let's talk about, I'm sorry. No, I'm not done, man. I told you it's going to be a while. Let's talk about what it means to the public. Right now, Henry County is fastly becoming the warehouse capital of the state, and I really think we're better than that. What this means to the public, to the people, when we create this workforce, we will attract manufacturing businesses to this community. We will have the workforce in place, we will be able to put employees there. The main point that this means to the citizens, when we get these businesses here, your taxes will go down. Homes cause taxes to go up, businesses cause taxes to go down. This is a win-win for Henry County. Now, we do have a slight technical issue that we're going to talk about, and I want to back up a little bit and give you a little bit of my expertise on the subject. I am a registered land surveyor, and there are only thirteen hundred registered land surveyors in the state of Georgia, which you think about that, thirteen hundred. It's very, very difficult to get your land surveying license. And one of the things that we have to know in like the back of our hand is boundary law. And I can't make mistakes. I make mistakes, people lose property, they get angry. So I went back through, and I have my boundary law book that is taught at the premier surveying school in the southeast. Sherri, can you put this on the overhead for me? And this is what I found. I didn't do a fancy presentation, I just taped two pages together. All right. We're going to read this together so we all have a clear understanding of what we're talking about and what we're doing here, and we're going to start with the first, which is a caveat at the bottom of the SPOLOSS that the voters passed. Funding of a technical school building subject to valid property interest being conveyed to the county and one or more municipalities by the state of Georgia or instrumentally therefore of. Now, I'm going to read, if you go down there, state law. In its broadest context, an easement may be defined as a right which one person has to use the land of others for a specific purpose not inconsistent with the general property in the owner. It is an interest in land but carries no title. The voters voted, was put in there to have interest in land, an easement is interest in land. That is my professional opinion. And I spoke with Ed Tony earlier today about the intent of the SPOLOSS, and I actually, if I could, I'd actually like to ask Mr. Steve Cash if you could come up for a second. I wasn't here during the SPOLOSS meeting, so, and I want to hear from the SPOLOSS Committee, I wasn't here during that time. What was the intent of the Committee? Was, you know, this caveat in the bottom about interest, was it fee simple interest or was it just interest? It's my understanding that it was part of the state's requirement at the time to make this happen, you had to have interest in property.
We did not get into the intricate parts of that, we just made recommendations and allowed the county attorney to take it from there.
Okay.
So that's, I cannot speak upon that.
Okay. So nothing was spelled out that it needed to be fee simple?
No, no, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cash. Well, again, fee simple, what this means, it means that Henry County would own part of Southern Crescent. That is what fee simple means when you talk about fee simple title, and if you talk about title. But I want to go over a couple of things here. Currently, Henry County owns Cottonfield Golf Course, so we're in the golfing business. We own Nash Farms, we're in the, whatever that is, business. We have an airport, we own airport hangars, I got bank buildings, I got fire stations I can't do anything with, and now, we're going to be in the school business. I don't see the need. I think that an easement does satisfy the law, I think the easement satisfies the SPOLOSS intent, I think the easement satisfies the intent that the voters meant for the money to be spent in. So with that, I'm going to wrap it up, and thanks, thanks, everybody for listening.
I yield the floor to District One.
I do.
I'm going to be short.
Okay.
I just want to say that years and years ago, I had an opportunity to utilize a technical school, which helped me, I think, move forward in my life. And I also said that if I was elected and for Commissioner, that I would always vote to move the county forward, and I think this is a good move for the county economically and education-wise, and I stand by my word.
Anybody else?
I guess it's my turn. A little history lesson. In 2013, when this come down, the Committee did submit to the Board of Commissioners a list, the Tech College was involved in it. At the time, the two attorneys, the three attorneys, had two local attorneys, one was the county attorney at the time, one was a local attorney, they had a lot of knowledge in this, and one was a bond counsel. The only way, at that time, they could legally put that on the ballot, otherwise, it would have never been on the ballot nor could have, it had been on the ballot. So in order to do that, it was the intent of the language that the Board would have some, Henry County would have some significant interest in it, which would be well beyond an easement. These taxpayers are providing five million, and that's their intent, and that's my intent. But when it got down to push came to shove, even counsel, a week ago, said that it's going to be difficult for us to do this because this and that. So having said that, I have always been a encourager of the tech school. As a matter of fact, Mayor Copeland and I spent all day one day, went to Warner Robins to visit the tech school, and it was enlightening, and I think it's an excellent thing. But I don't think it was the intent of the citizens, the taxpayers, to put five million dollars and merely get an easement. That, I know it says interest, but the deal is, what do they get for the, they want to be a part of it. Okay, they didn't just want to merely give five million dollars, they were so proud of this, they wanted to be a part of it and give twenty-five percent of it. We didn't know it was going to be twenty-five percent now, but it ended up being twenty-five percent. So I have worked this whole week to give options with counsel to try to work this out. One was a fee simple. Okay, that wasn't going to happen. Reason being, they found out the state is already going, I mean, the Tech College is already obligated to use state bonds, and that requires them to have full ownership. So I suggested that, why don't we enter into an intergovernmental agreement, which we have to have, and put the language in it that at the retirement of the bonds, have an automatic reversion in there that Henry County will get twenty-five percent of it or whatever the portion is. And that's fair and equitable, nobody gets hurt twenty years down the road, or whenever the bond retired, Henry County citizens get their investment back. So having said that, I'm prepared to vote no, and I think these people know this, and I think that's why I'm here, but I have run out of wiggle room, and I just don't, in my mind, I think it's not the intent of what the voters thought of. So having said that, I'll yield the floor to somebody with a motion or a comment.
Oh, yeah?
Chairman and I would like to move that we accept the conveyance of the easement as stated in the resolution.
Which one? You've got two choices.
One with the E.
You got one that says- You got one that says.
One with the easement.
Okay.
Well, one of the options accepts the conveyance of the easement, which I think is the one Mr. Barm suggested, the other one would require conveyance of fee simple.
That's exactly right. So you're talking about the, just for the language, it says, "The conveyance of the county and one or more municipality of an easement, informed and substance satisfactory to the county attorney, chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and county manager granting the county access over and across the portion of the property highlighted in yellow on Exhibit A, shall satisfy the conditions of a conveyance of a valid property interest called in the resolution." Is that your intent? Do we have a motion on the floor? Have a, from District Three, second from District One, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, your right, your right hand as well. Thank you so much. I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess here, and we'll be back in five minutes.